Call the meeting to order. Please rise. Join us in the pledge, those of you who made it out tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Terros, for joining us this evening.
I'm waiting.
Waiting. And other than that, those viewing us at home, it's been a little too chilly to come out. Going right to the minutes of January 6th, 2014, regular session. Mr. Foley.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the January 21, 2014, regular session minutes as written.
Second. What date? What?
No, date's wrong. We didn't have a January 21 meeting.
No.
It should be. No, it shouldn't. It should be.
The 6th.
6th.
First meeting.
Hmm?
It's the 6th.
Today's the 6th.
I put on the wrong.
Let me rephrase that, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the January 6th, 2014, regular session minutes as written.
That's the motion I thought I seconded.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Hear ye none? All in favor?
Aye.
The executive session minutes for January 6th.
I'll have an amendment to it, but obviously it's an executive session, so what I'll do is I will forward my suggested amendment, so I'd ask that you hold off on it.
Sure.
And then everybody can decide for the next meeting.
All right. So we'll postpone approval of those minutes until our next meeting. Moving to legal bills of for November 2013.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve legal bills for November 2013 in the amount of $11,340.40. This follows Goldman Page General, $9,846.40. Goldman Page Labor, $1,494.
Second. Motion and second. Any discussion? Hear ye none? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone here for public comment? All right. Moving right along. Item 6, discuss town administrator recruitment. I believe we have the scope services that we need to sign relative to that, Mr. Vali Kornus.
It is indeed. It's in the board's packet.
And the other issue I think we should discuss is the makeup of the search committee. Sure, let's get some thoughts to that in terms of numbers to make up the committee and your thoughts on how many board members, department heads, school department, and citizens.
Finance committee.
Finance committee as well. That's right. My thought was two members of the board selected, school superintendent are designated, at least one department head, member of the finance committee, and a member of the public, including obviously a resident of the community.
It's a good candidate. Two members of the board, superintendent of schools, one department head.
One to two department heads, member of the finance committee, and a member of the general public.
How many? What's the total count there?
Seven. I thought seven would be the appropriate number. I thought five was too small. Nine gets too unwieldy. I think seven may be appropriate number, but just open it up to discussion. I like that. Works for me.
No, I'm good with that. Two board members, superintendent of schools are designated. You say you're talking two department heads? Mr. Chairman, that gets you to the.
That gets us to seven. Two department heads.
That's right.
One FinCon member, one member of the general public. Just as a suggestion, what we have done in the past, I think we've gone through this about four times now, we have also utilized the services, if we can get it, of area town administrators, town managers, if they're willing to volunteer, be they currently seated ones or recent retirees, which we found extremely helpful and insightful since they sit in the positions that hold it and useful members of the committee. So I don't think it's a bad idea. Was Mr. Heck and Blackner running?
Yes.
He was. You were chosen, I believe.
He was indeed.
Yeah. And trying to think who we utilized before. You know, I just think it's helpful, and again, it's someone from, again, outside the community who's in the profession, maybe looking at candidates a little bit differently than the members of this board who may be sitting on the screening committee.
Mr. Delaney.
Mr. Sear.
Since we've, using the services of the call-in center, do we really need a TA from the outside? We have a facilitator now. They're in the business. They've interviewed many, many, many town administrators. They're presenting to us kind of pre-screening individuals to be screened by the screening committee and questioning whether or not that's really needed.
Mr. Chairman, in listening to Kobiagi, in the number of instances that have been involved with, what he's, what I got from him was, he doesn't necessarily, or his partner there does not necessarily get involved with helping to winnow it down actively themselves, but what's the committee? Helps guide the committee to do that, but they don't necessarily weigh in who's good for you, who's not good for you, and that sort of a thing, who may fit well and who may not. In addition to that, I would assume that the candidates that we're going to be looking at, they've been very familiar with these candidates too because of the roles they're playing in other communities. Again, they've already formulating opinions about people, maybe where they fit, where they don't fit, what might be a good fit. But I didn't get the impression that they were going to necessarily weigh in and try and influence the screening process presented, not facilitate it, but they weren't going to necessarily try and influence it to that degree. So I just think maybe having someone in the profession, sitting in as a screening committee member, to help winnow down what's going to come to the board ultimately, whether it's three, whether it's five, whatever it is, could be helpful. So I just didn't, I don't see them as, I see them as a facilitator. I don't see them necessarily as influencing how the candidates get winnowed down. Again, I could be wrong, but that's the impression I got from it. He wasn't going to say.
No, I agree. That's exactly.
I agree with that, Steve. I think then, if we're going to go down that path, we have to give some consideration to either reducing the current selection or adding to the size of the group.
Well, then we go down to one department head instead of two, and we keep it at seven. I think it gets, I think a committee larger than that gets too unwieldy. I think seven is, we'd like to keep it at seven.
I thought they helped us in the process until it got to about five, and then they get out of the process from there.
My understanding was that they anticipate, what, 20 to 25 or so, and then they're going to get it to 10 to 12, and then they're going to present it. I agree with Steve.
They're going to do background checks. They're going to check the references.
Right.
No, no, they're doing more than that. Because they're interviewing us.
Right. But in terms of.
They're going to do demographic of the community.
The kinds of backgrounds that would best fit this community. So they're doing that piece of it already. That was the point I was making earlier.
Right. But once the interviewing process starts, they were going to kind of back off and be a facilitator.
Right. My point was if, I think it's a fine idea. Why don't we let them recommend a person to be on that committee, since they have the relationship with a lot of retired town administrators.
That's an idea, too. I'm sure they.
I'd feel more comfortable with that.
No problem with that.
Well, they can, we can ask them for recommendations. We don't have to.
Right. Get the list from them. We can, you know, members can provide their own list of suggested people.
But I think Peter really did help the last time. I added something, but the, again, it doesn't necessarily have to be retiree, because he certainly wasn't a retiree. He was an incumbent, seated town manager in Redding. Some long-term serving ones, Loomis, Linfield, Littleton.
Loomis is actually new.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, he was retired.
But he was.
But he was there 20 years.
He was there a long time.
Right.
Right. So, I mean, I think we have a pretty good array of people to ask if they would be willing to spend the time with our screening committee, you know, and reach out to Peter. I don't know where Peter is these days, since he's retired, but he's available to.
So I would like to have everyone come. So we're going to.
The other thing, some of these screening committees have been rather large, too, where every member of the board had a member of the community sitting in there. He says it's run the whole spectrum. He said basically the outcome is all the same.
This was my, well, once again, this was my thought.
No, no.
Just to stop the discussion, but I thought seven, to me, seven was the right, is to be the right number, but.
Oh, I could take seven.
Everyone has given that some thought.
Oh, I have. That's the number I had right now. I think it's a perfect number.
I guess. I want to get that piece settled first.
What's that?
Yeah, let's do that.
Settle the number first.
Is everyone on this? Oh, I left you.
My idea was seven or nine. Nine being the max.
Similar thoughts, depending upon where we ended up on, someone from the outside assisting us. How many residents did we want to have included? More than one? And then how are we going to, I guess, it would depend upon, you know, how are we going to choose the one member of the general public? Who's going to choose the FinCon representative? Is it going to be us or is it going to be the FinCon? Who's going to choose the department? Is it us or is it going to be the department?
I thought, my thought was this board selects.
Okay. This was just a guess. I know. I didn't know.
Again, I'm just suggesting, but my thought process was this board selects who makes up the search committee.
Makes the list to ask because some.
Bless you. What's that?
Makes the list to ask.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Some people may not be able to do it for whatever reason.
So you get one of the members of the general public. I mean, so seven or nine, but again, I think I would like to see someone in the business included in the process, you know, if you're going to eliminate one of the department heads to do that.
And then go to municipal manager.
Right. That's the offset, if you want to bring in someone who's.
If you stay at seven.
Town administrator. Keep it at seven. Drop it down to one, one department head.
Or you can go to nine of the municipal manager and one additional member of the general public. Again, you've got.
The seven, I mean, I think ultimately it's got to be this, this board. What happens is, I think you water down the influence of the makeup of this board once you start getting, now you have two members of the public who carry as much weight as the board, because you have two board members.
In narrowing down the number of files.
Right.
We're going to determine how many files we want to see. Or maybe the crop will determine.
Will determine that, yeah.
Two. Crop of candidates. So I mean, that can be adjusted, too, if the comfort level isn't here, that you're not going to be getting a full choice of everybody who you want to consider necessary.
I'm still comfortable with seven.
Me, too. I'm fine with seven.
That's good. Looks like a seven.
Well, I think, well, Bob.
I said.
Bob said seven. That's what he was.
I mean, Steve's made a couple of points.
Absolutely.
Seems to me that we've gone through this process a couple of times, and seven rings a bell. It works pretty good. There's only so many questions you can ask in a period of time typically that's taken. Maybe in this case, we have to lengthen the time. The group determines the questions and then usually divides up who's going to ask the specific questions, and then it goes from there.
So from there, we have to determine who we wish to select. Having not been part of this process before, I was going to ask for everyone to bring forward who we wish to have, unless.
If I might make a suggestion, before we start throwing out. My suggestion would be that we agree on the seven, and that as far as the department heads, my suggestion would be that the chair poll the board members as to who the department head should be, and also members of the board should, through the chair, suggest members of the general public would forth with consideration, and if there's a morality for someone, then that kind of prevails, and if the logjam has to be broken, then provide for that. That way, there, we're not throwing names out here, and then the person that says, "I can't do it, I don't want to do it, I'm not interested in participating," but at least now we can narrow it down. It's going to be seven members. This is what the makeup's going to be through the chair. The membership will make suggestions in relation to the department head, and then suggestions of the general public, and see if we can come to a consensus that way. You can let the rest of the board know what's everybody's reported. And when I say, "Oh, we have a problem with one for the general public, or we have the one, here's what was thrown out there, can we come to a consensus on that and pull it together?"
I like that process. I was a bit uneasy about just doing it.
Yeah, just throwing out names out there.
So I like that approach. So if you give some thought and get back to me by the weekend, Mr. If you'd like to suggest.
As far as municipal managers, I mean, did we want to just limit it to a retiree, or do we want to look at?
I don't think we do. Oh, he's, I don't. Why? Seven?
It is. Two members of the board, superintendent of schools are designated, one department head, one FinCon member, one from the general public. Municipal manager.
Correct.
And as far as the FinCon member, for those, get same thing, consensus of the board.
We'll screen out in some time. Once we get back to you, I'd like to move forward to possibly have a committee selected next week.
Which is Thursday night?
No, no, no. Our next opening is Monday. Speaking of next Thursday, Greg, we are posted for executive session Thursday, correct?
We will be.
We are.
Yes. Yes. Thank you.
Anything further on a particular topic? We have to just sign it. We are ready.
All right. Well, a question on that, Sean.
What time is it? 20:00?
Were you able to get the funds from FinCon?
Yes.
Yes, I thought I'd report back.
I couldn't, right? I was just looking at my notes.
It was pretty quick. They did so quick. Didn't even have time to get that.
Time war. Adam told me.
I was late on early. Did say seven Thursday. Move to our, item eight, appointments, reappointments. Fourth of July committee, I believe we have for.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of following name for appointment as a member of the Fourth of July committee for term to expire on December 31, 2016. There are four openings. Timothy Gomstroh, 19 Abbott Road.
Second. Motion and second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Gomstroh has been involved with the Fourth of July committee, has an interest in serving, which we certainly appreciate. As mentioned, there's four openings, and I don't know if that includes the one that we just got a resignation from, John Magazoo, Fourth of July committee. I'd just please accept this as my formal resignation to the Fourth of July committee as a qualified individual willing and able to take my place. So I don't know if it's four. We have at least three, maybe still four. So if anybody's interested in assisting with the Fourth of July committee, please step forward. I think Gomstroh comes highly recommended from other members of the Fourth of July committee who have participated in the process before and would recommend for appointment. Thank you.
Mr. O'Leary? All in favor?
Aye.
Two names. Youth Services Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of following names for appointment as a member of the Youth Services Committee for term to expire on December 31, 2016. There are four openings. Peter A. Mechein, 3 Circa Street, Woburn, Mass. Two, Sandra Guarnes, 68 Uwood Drive.
Second. Motion and second. Any discussion?
I did, I did speak to both of them, and I did look over their, their applications, and very impressed by both of them, so, and I did speak to the chairman also, and they were all on board.
Just as far as, Peter's role, is he a businessman?
You know I don't have it with me.
It didn't necessarily say on the application, but I. Is it with Hillbag?
Oh, that's right. That's how I recognized it. Yeah, thanks, Bob.
Here is the, the bank.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ananamous. Historical Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of following name for appointment as a member of the Historical Commission for term to expire on December 31, 2016. There are two openings. Stone, J.C., 13 Sylvia Road.
Was this in the packet?
It was not in the original. It was added since we.
Okay. Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Again, I dealt with this person via emails, but then also a couple of members of the Historical Commission contacted me on also and suggested that we do move forward with it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ananamous. Any appointments?
I just have a question on the appointments.
Yes.
Greg, is it possible we can get an update on what we have remaining? Because I went through my list yesterday, and I'm not sure I caught them all.
Okay.
You can have Jackie just send me.
Absolutely.
I'm not sure what the rest of the board members wanted as well, but I think I'm almost there. I may have one more left, but I'm sure she'll have something that I missed.
We have more positions than applicants right now.
Yeah, we do.
Plenty of openings.
Plenty of openings, unfortunately.
I'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think nine may take a little while, so 10 of the town administrators report, then we have to go back. Mr. O'Leary?
Evening, everyone. As you may have heard, the governor released the state aid figures for fiscal year 2015. I'd like to provide you with a copy of the estimates that were included in the governor's budget package, just take you through the high points, and then as a follow-up to that, I'd like to just have a little bit of a discussion about the town's fiscal 2015 revenues and some of our expenses as were in the process of putting together the budget and assembling the budget recommendations for the board's consideration next month. So what you have before you is the fiscal year 2015 state aid estimates. You'll note the column that says FY 2015 Governor's Budget Proposal shows a total state aid figure of $8,526,547. It's an increase of $123,000 or 1.5% over the current year's level, which you may have heard that the Chapter 70 went up by 2.3% across the state, but North Reading did not fare so well. So the numbers are disappointing. The most notable one that affects general government is the unrestricted government aid category. At one time, that used to be known as lottery and additional assistance, and over the period of time, combined it to something called unrestricted government aid, and that account has really been flat. So going forward, it's really incumbent upon town officials to work with its legislative delegation, both our senator and state representative, in terms of looking to see these amounts go up. As you know, costs are very increasing, and state aid is a major component of the town's revenue stream. Anything more on that?
Can't get any more flat than that. The exact same amount.
All right. Smoke.
Well, it's all, it's static.
I'll get you additional copy of it. So the, next is our revenue expense report, and it's been updated to, again, include the $127,000 that you just saw in the governor's aid proposal. The other major revenue categories have not changed, and again, the assumptions across the board are conservative. If you look at the local receipts, you'll note that they're fairly conservative, and this is the subject of discussion at our monthly chairs and vice chairs meeting, so it does reflect input from that committee. However, if you turn to page two, you'll see that we have a number of things that we are in the process of updating, or I am in the process of updating, and I'd like to go through those with you. The first category is what we consider to be our fixed costs. So the town's practice is to take its budget, to take its revenue budget that you see on the first page, and apply off the top the cost of what it considers to be its fixed costs, which consist of primarily debt service and other fixed costs, including employee benefits, of which the major item is employee health insurance. So the category, what we've done this year and what we did last year is we began budgeting an amount from our reoccurring revenues to go toward the capital improvement plan, and you'll see that we have an amount that's increased that's budgeted right off the top of $100,000 going toward the capital plan. The regional school assessment, I did have an opportunity to see the Northeast Regional Vocational School Superintendent last Thursday. They are not at the point where they can release a budget number. I'm getting the impression that their budget process is not quite as far along as we would like to see. So what we've assumed is level funding, and there's some risk in that, because depending upon the state aid that they receive and the number of students that are anticipated to be enrolled, that number may increase. So we did assume level funding. The other categories that are here really involve debt service, and both are exempt and non-exempt categories. And you'll recall from town meeting in the spring, there was some significant borrowings that were done under the FY 2014 capital improvement program. So what we've indicated is that the borrowings have not been completed yet, so those items that were voted at spring town meeting, which is $260,000 in general municipal projects, which include everything from studies to purchase of vehicles, and then we also bonded in an additional $585,000 in water and Hillview Enterprise debt. So those items need to be put out to permanent bonding, and there will be debt service payments that will be due in 2015, and the debt budget will be revised at that time to reflect what the cost of those borrowings will be. So that amount has not been assumed and put in here at this point. The other categories, as you go down through the list, are pretty, pretty much the same as we've, as we have had in the past. However, the notable exception is the general liability insurance. The amount that's been budgeted includes an increase that I've been appraised through our insurance company. It states 5% plus the cost of the new school. So the cost of the new school is $79,000, and that's the cost of the property insurance associated with that new facility. Offsetting that is $8,700 when the middle school will come off while it's being constructed. We will not be insuring the middle school while it's under construction. So that's an offsetting cost, but keep in mind that the property liability insurance budget, which has been fairly flat, has increased as, primarily as a result of the changes due to the new building coming online.
Greg, can you just stop?
Yes, Sean.
The middle school insurance number is what?
$8,700.
It's only $8,700?
Yeah.
Question.
On the general liability.
On the general liability insurance, so it's 5% increase plus, plus the premium for the new high school?
Right.
That's about $80,000 for this high school?
Yes.
Really?
And we have a firm cost on that. It was one of the things that was really important for us to actually identify what the actual cost of that would be.
Greg, isn't it based upon square footage?
It's not based...
It's not based on actual construction. They're going to come out...
They'll come out after the fact.
Right. That's their estimate.
Once it's in, once it's in the ground, they'll come out.
Thank you. We're playing that. Okay.
Just looking at our other categories that are here under fixed costs, our county retirement number has been received, so you'll note that the amount that's in here reflects discounts, because we, the town will make its payment to the county retirement system in full on July 1st. So, that is a full number, and that's reflective of our, the cost of our retirees plus the pension costs assumed by the entire county retirement system. Health insurance is probably the number that concerns me the most as we sit here today. As a result of some conversations that I've had with our health insurance advisory agent, I've increased this amount, and I've increased it to reflect a total of 7%. That's comprised of 2.4%, which represents costs associated with the Affordable Care Act, and what the trend is indicating across the board in terms of renewals potentially for July 1. I will be meeting with our insurance advisor to review our claims next week. I anticipate for the meeting that we have with the chairs and vice chairs in February, I'll have more definitive information to have, to provide. But I think it's important at this point that we set the health insurance number a little bit higher. That's based upon renewal of the status quo. So, if it, what we've done in the past is if it's determined that the town does not have the money to pay those, what we will then do is go back and work with our employees and our insurance advisor, and craft a program that we can afford. And I would expect that's the same approach that we're going to take for fiscal year So, that's the, the revenue side and, and the fixed expenses. The finance director and I have begun our review of the budget proposals that have come in for fiscal year 2015 on the town side. I can say in a general sense, they're, they're well done, and they're modest in terms of their requests. There are a couple of requests for new staffing that are being evaluated, but there's no real major initiatives that are being proposed in the budget that will amount to a significant cost. Again, our budget kickoff meeting is February 15th, which is a Saturday morning, and it will begin here in this room. So, please allow me going forward to update this as the board meets. I think it's important for us to go through and have an understanding of what the assumptions and the changes are associated with the budget, and I welcome your input. It's very important to me to have that.
Greg, just to, excuse me.
Sure.
Under the revenue, you've got debt exclusion permanent in high and middle school. That total of those two is less than what you've got for debt service exempt on the expense side. What am I missing?
I can't assure you that the $3,337 number is dead accurate, because that's the number that I have ingrained in my memory. So, I would ask you to, 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 as you look at the debt service associated with the new school, that's it. That's it. And it's just maybe a matter of the accounting department catching up. Remember, it doesn't affect the available funds, because it's money in, money out.
We're charging the taxpayers...
Play to stand up.
$5,535,124, which goes against the exempt debt.
I understand that, Bob. What I'm saying is, it doesn't impact the other budgets because it's exempt debt?
No, I understand it doesn't impact. It just seems funny that the two numbers are different. I would have expected them to be the same.
Just to run through, one last thing related to finances. The free cash balance, as you recall, we went to town meeting in October, and there were some charges made against free cash. The town spent $680,000. So, the free cash balance at this time is $512,601, and those will be an available source of funds for spring town meeting. The first purpose of that will be to set us a, excuse me, to pay for any snow deficit that we've incurred for this year. But the, the fact that we do have $512,601 is a bit of good news in view of everything else that's going on there.
Any questions?
Just in relation to the Medicare expenses under employee benefits?
Yeah.
I would anticipate those will be going up with an increase in salaries?
They do.
Whether it be step increases, negotiated contracts, and all the rest?
They do. They track, they track our salaries.
Right. So, that hasn't, isn't necessarily reflected here?
That's, that's true, Stephen. And typically, what we'll do is we'll go forward with a fairly conservative number on Medicare until all of our contracts have been settled, and then look to transfer money into that account throughout the course of the year.
Okay, but that's, Medicare contributions go regarding, there's no cap on it like Social Security, which they don't pay, but...
Right. 1.45% of salary is Medicare, and most of our exempt employees are leaving the system. So, the few we had are, are leaving, and everyone is subject to the tax.
So, everybody's subject to the tax, and anybody we add on is going to be subject to the tax, plus whatever we have negotiated already into contracts.
Correct.
So, I would think that that number, rather than showing static here, should show some sort of a...
It's a good point.
An increase percentage, right, based upon what we anticipate salary increases to be. It's been around $500,000, and it's going to be another $50,000 bucks, $60,000. Rather than trying to plug the hole later, anticipate it now.
Yeah, I just, I just want to next talk about OPEB.
I, I just have one more question.
Sure.
On the local receipts.
Sure, Mike.
Where is it? Where are we covering for ALS income?
Yeah, that's, if you look down under other financing sources on page one...
Yep.
Look under transfer from ambulance revenue.
Okay.
That's where the ALS revenues would be. And we've assumed flat revenues. That's not the case. What we're saying is we're looking to retain a portion of our ALS revenues to pay for debt service. We know that there's going to be a purchase of a new ambulance at a later date, or other costs related to the fire department, but it does not reflect all of the, the income coming in through the ALS program. That's a good, a good point. So, that number could be adjusted if you decide you want to do it.
Yeah, I think it's important. It's starting to become...
The point is that number, this is what all that number is being used in the budget.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, as you know, the town is obligated to go out...
Greg, I'm good. Don't mind.
Yeah. Oh, it's eight o'clock. I'm sorry.
If we can go back to public hearing, setting of the town meeting dates. I don't think that's going to take too long until we get back to town administration. Because everyone's here for the eight o'clock public hearing. Mr. Cody?
Mr. Chairman, in accordance with the Town of North Reading, Chapter 241, I move to set the dates for 2014 town meetings as follows.
You need to read the public hearing notice card.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, and it's, it's in the packet. I believe it's a blue copy. Do y'all have a copy of it here?
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Legal notice, Town of North Reading, Public Hearing. Town meeting dates, the North Reading Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on January 21st, 2014, at 8:00 p.m. in Room 14, North Reading Town Hall, 235 North Street, to receive public input on selecting dates for the annual, annual and October 2014 town meeting in accordance with the Town, according to the North Reading Home Rule Charter 2-4-1. Thanks.
That meeting was continued to tonight, the 27th, as a result of the storm.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, in accordance with the Town of North Reading, Charter 2-4-1, I move to set the dates for 2014 town meeting as follows. June 2nd, 2014, October 6th, 2014.
Second?
Motion is second. Any discussion? When was the October date again?
6th.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Janamus. Took care of that. Thank you. Mr. Valley Holmes?
Board members, so we are required to do a study of our other post-employment benefits, and the finance department has gone out and contracted the services of an actuary. This is the actuary's report, which shows the town's liability for the fiscal year ending on June 30th, 2013. So, the report says July 1 of 2012, and I would ask you to turn to page three. Page three is the summary, and what it shows is the accrued liability has increased to There are a number of reasons as to why that's happened, but most of them are as a result of some changes in actuarial assumptions, which are summarized on page four. And those are involving, if you want to turn to page four briefly, you can see the changes involving the, involve the participation rate going, increasing to 70% of retirees, not 50%, which was the previous report, that the cost of health insurance would be 9% a year versus 7%, that the mortality rates would be consistent with the mortality rates in the tables that are cited here, and that there are other changes that are here that provide a more realistic view of what the town's potential liability would be for retiree health insurance and pensions going forward. So, although the number is huge, we don't need to raise it. However, it's important to have an understanding, this is the actuary's report that gives you an idea of what that summary cost would be. And then there's significant detail that goes beyond, that explains all of the terms and the assumptions that the actuaries use in, in making their assumptions. Again, this is a problem that begs for a solution, a town Commonwealth solution, and I've heard again for the second year in a row, that the Commonwealth wishes to partner with cities and towns in addressing the OPEB liability on a more comprehensive basis, which is certainly some good news, but the, the report is here, and it again speaks for itself in terms of what the actuaries view is of the potential liability the town could face.
Questions? Mr. Leary? Just a request, Greg. Could you have a copy of this put on the drop box?
Yeah, sure. That's a good point.
Why is it dated July 1st, 2012?
Oh, because this, it's for the fiscal year ending on June 30th, 2013. So, what they do is they, they look at the beginning of the year, but the report runs for the entire duration of, so to speak, the fiscal year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Liz and I did have an opportunity to meet with the actuary, just so you know, to, to validate and answer a number of questions that we had, and I thought the report was well done. I thought there was a lot of, a lot of effort put into it by the, by the firm that came out to see us. Just a couple of more relatively quick things. The first is Chief Murphy. Steve, could you just take this and pass it down? Chief Murphy and the police department had done a citizen survey. I'm sure you may have received an email link about a study, and, excuse me, no, I'm sorry, I'm going to wait until this...
Okay, so this is a citizen survey about the performance of the police department, and I think overall, it's very positive, and I, I wanted the board to see it. There are a number of questions that are here, and the, the overwhelming response is positive and supportive of the efforts of our police department. There were 145 respondents, and you can read through it, but I did compliment Chief Murphy for going ahead and putting, so I think it really is a good snapshot of the public opinion of our police department.
Is he going to share the comments that were made with the survey in relation to the other we specified, and then on the last page, any recommendations or suggestions? Be interested just to see. Yeah, I can get the comments.
Yeah. I think that's a good, that's a good point.
And the last thing I have in summary is, there was an article in the Lawrence and the Andover paper about the Reading, North Reading water rates, and I was contacted by the press, and the assumption was is that North Reading is padding its water rates to make a...
That's Andover, not Reading.
Excuse me. Andover's, that North Reading is padding its water rates. And I want to state emphatically for the record, we are not doing that. As the article indicated, the town is looking at all of its costs associated with water, and factoring those into the water rate, including debt service, the cost of employee benefits, salaries, and the cost of running a fully functioning enterprise department. So, that was kind of clouded in the article. I had an opportunity to speak with Chairman Vespoloni on the Andover Board of Selectmen, and also with the town manager, and, and they both regret this article, or they state that it's not indicative of the opinion, majority position of the Board of Selectmen in Andover, so unclearly here with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Item nine, meeting behavior decorum policy first reading. This is the suggested addition to our board policy by Mr. Vessery.
Mr. Delaney?
Vessery.
I presented this at our last meeting primarily to force a discussion, or necessarily adding or making a change to our current policy, because I do believe that we as professionals representing the community should know better than some of the behavior that's been exhibited over time, and we've all been guilty of it at one point or another as a result of the tension in the room, frustration over certain things, and so on and so forth. So, I, I think I had mentioned that this is a new year, and that we should make a commitment to ourselves to improve how we appear during meetings, and how we present ourselves, and how we treat our guests, and just overall how the community looks at us over the next year. So, what I'm looking for is more of a gentleman's agreement that we're going to look at in that direction. And with that, I just withdraw my suggestion of adding... I just withdraw my suggestion of adding something to our policy manual that we shouldn't really need.
Because I was wondering, who was gonna reprimand me? No, I, I think, I think it's a point well taken. I agree with you that all of us from time to time the last few years, we've all had occasion to probably acted in a way that we probably wish we hadn't from time to time. I think we gotta be cognizant of the fact of who we represent. We represent the town and the image that we project. So, I think there's some value in having this discussion. I would agree with you. I don't know if it necessarily has to be a policy. For the last few months that I've been here, I'm gonna behave myself. How's that?
This is aimed at you or anyone else?
No, I know. I, I know. It's, it's, it's the board.
Us as a board.
Us as a board, so.
And it's happened to any one of us. It's not, you know, it's just to try to get us as a board.
Going in the right direction.
Set 2014 off, calendar year 2014, in the right direction. We have a lot of challenges ahead of ourselves, and I would like to see that we do a better job than we've done in the past. Been on the board now, this is my 10th year, and it seems like we've slid down a little bit. And I'd like us to go in the other direction. That's why I made this suggestion, or to have a discussion rather than seriously make changes to the policy manual. And I'd like to hear from the rest of the board members associated with the comments. If there's a question.
I think we should make the change. I think it's a, a good change to make in the book. But, you know, since you brought it up, and I, I think we should go forward with it. I don't think we should take it off the table. But I think we should also go back. I went back and read that codebook, and it's pretty outdated.
Well, continue. I mean, I, I had the opportunity to read it. I was, before I was going, I was picking pieces from time to time, but then I just read through the whole thing. I do, I think the whole codebook has to be read.
And there's some pieces I'm really missing. And, and so, you know, since you took the opportunity to bring this up, I think we should bring up everything that's really missing in that codebook. And this is one particular area I definitely feel needs to be addressed. I'm gonna pass this out. I wrote this up to.
You have a copy?
Pass it around. It's another area that I think if we're gonna make a change, and like this one, I think we should make changes in that and everything. And this one's an ethics, ethics policy, because in that codebook, under that code of conduct area, it does, we're really silent on the ethics. And Mr. Delaney, if it's okay with you, I'd like to read, leave the declaration, the purpose of law, of this. It's a policy.
Talk about what's in front of us first, and then we can expand it maybe?
Yeah, that's fine. Whatever you want to do. But my point is that if we're gonna make these changes, I, I think we really need to look at the codebook overall. And this particular area is silent. And I think this needs to be addressed. Because, you know, our meeting behavior hasn't been the best at times, I agree. But overall, there's other things that haven't been the best either, and we should probably make sure we cover them going forward. So, I give this to all of you. Everybody read it, and we can continue this rather than try to have a first reading tonight. And Kai would suggest that we table it, and we encompass all the changes all at once in a future meeting. Maybe we have a couple of the board members designated to maybe take the effort on highlighting the areas that are outdated and, and work together. Maybe build a little subcommittee if you want to update the book. I'm not sure about how you do it going forward. But I'd like to, whatever we do, to include this ethics policy as part of the discussion as well, along with the meeting behavior.
I think what the, what the agenda was, was the first reading of Mr. Vessery had proposed as a meeting behavior policy. Now, he's come forward and said he put it out there so it would get us to discuss the issues that we collectively have had for the last number of years. I don't have a problem, as I said when we first started to speak, Michael, in terms of subcommittee form, to take a look at all of the board's policies, bring them up to date. And it's clear, and I think it's a good time, because there are some things in there that we just don't operate as we had in the years past in terms of meeting packets getting delivered and things like that. But also, there's a number of policies that concern the board and the town administrator, where we're, we're basing on a new town administrator. I think it's an opportunity to take a look to see if we can, if those need to be updated and changed in some regard. And maybe we consider at that point what you are looking for us to, to take a look at as well as what the board had proposed. I think that is probably a better way to, to go about it.
Agreed.
The board can decide what policies it wants to amend, delete, add, at a later date. That's probably a better way to handle it. But, uh, notice?
I don't recall, since I've been on the board, let's say, 10th year, that there has been a complete review of the board policies. There have been some additions to policies, but not many like 10.
And if you go back and look, you see some things have been, it's been piecemealed. Something has been changed, but a lot of it goes back 10, 15, 20 years.
70s, 75s.
So, I think it's. Personally, I think it's worthwhile to take a look at.
Yeah, most of it in the past has been, it's a reaction to a situation or a need to address something. It's never been a wholesale review of the policy book. Quite frankly, there's been very little reference to the policy book in the years I've been sitting here.
There'll probably be, there should be, I think, a reference to it. There should be. You should have a mindset, I think, coming in, you should have a mindset on what the policies are.
Yeah, and generally, what the policy is, rather than directed as it's a policy of the board in relation to generally how we would like the administration to perform their task, time, some timelines associated and things of that nature. Those have been, generally, that's what's been addressed. I would say most recently, it's been years. Other than that, it's.
The only thing we've done that I can recall is Town O'Land, how we approached the cell town. That was what we've done for the last two, three years.
Right. And again, generally, the, the policy book isn't, isn't picked up unless someone's upset about something and looking for something to hang the hat on, quite frankly. But again, it should serve as a, as a guide for the administration at a minimum as to what the expectations are. And again, they've changed over the years, and they change with the board, you know? And again, but technology has changed things significantly. As you say, you know, delivery of the packets and that sort of thing, when it would be, doesn't change where we'd like to have the information, but how we get it. People dropping it off, knocking on, saying, "It's a pack." So, I mean.
It was a day when that happened, Mr. Fordy.
Yes, it was. It wasn't that long ago. You know, so to me, if we're gonna take a look at, at Holston, that's fine. It's just, but it's another task that needs to be undertaken, which is gonna take a lot of time and effort, I think, to do it and do it right and do it well. And, you know, where is it on our priority list at this point in relation to everything else that's gonna be going on? So, just was to decide. Yeah, it's nice, but I'm not hung up on how we have to get it done either. It's a, a period of time.
Yeah, I don't envision this happening over the next couple of months.
Until after you leave?
I just don't see, given, given the policies that we have, it can't be done in a matter of a couple of months. I think it has to take six months to be yet to probably be at a point where the board has to consider just reviewing it. That was my thought, but.
Maybe you can take it on as a volunteer, as a citizen of North Reading.
I'll have an extra, some extra time we might need.
Okay.
But I, I mean, if, if there are a couple of board members who will want to step up and take a look and take an eye, I think that'd be a worthwhile endeavor. Don't have to tell me now, but I, I think it should be done though, at some point. There are things that are outdated. And there were some procedures that we do are not consistent with the policy. So, I think in that regard, there's something that should be done.
Probably a good reason.
Right, but the policy should reflect the good reason why we're doing it a different way now. So, just, I, I think, just give it some thought. There are a couple of board members that want to take it.
Well, you know, I think that the way to get it done is to make the commitment and create a subcommittee of, to members to makes commitment to go through it, even if it's targeted at a section at a time.
Probably a more realistic way of getting it done. And, and in this particular chapter, it probably should be the first since we at least have a couple of board members that are concerned with the way it's written. And this do, now two things being proposed. Maybe this is the area where we start.
Unopposed, if you two gentlemen would like to get together and take a look at it. Have the time, we're already doing it.
Talk to Bob.
Don't have to tell me, tell me now.
Just think about it.
You think about it.
I'm gonna take on a task with somebody.
Right. No, no, I think.
I will at least take on, you know, a chapter or two. I don't think it would be right to have a couple of board members do them all, but I'd certainly be willing to do that.
You two want to take over?
Not as much as I have to refresh myself with the.
The policies?
With the policy book. I mean, I know exactly where it is, so I'll look at it.
It's right, you got it right here.
It's right there.
It's right, it's a little like that, right here.
Not just there, but it's also right there on my desk. Get it right there. I didn't reach. Haven't found the need to pull it out, I guess.
Right.
And again, I think that's discussion for another day, I guess, but.
You two want to set some time aside, take a little, a section or two to.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I think we can.
There you go. Holding in business.
Have we finished discussing Mr. Vessery's proposal?
Oh.
I don't know.
I was hoping to include it as part of the review, so.
I'm sorry?
Including it as part of the review.
Go ahead, Steve. If you want to speak on it, go right ahead.
Well, I just think it was, uh, it's certainly noteworthy that Mr. Vessery found it necessary to put it forth for consideration so that, again, we could publicly address, again, the situation in, in a different forum in another meeting than what we have in the past. Obviously, you know, Bob served, has been involved for over 40 years on a lot of boards, committees, and commissions, you know? School Committee, Finance Committee, Board of Selectmen, Hillview Commission. And I served with them on a couple of them. And, you know, never found it necessary to propose it. You know, I, I just found it unfortunate that we, that we are, any, any member of the board felt it necessary to propose such a thing. I, I had spoken to Bob earlier saying that my reaction after thinking about it was I would probably be opposed to including it in the policy, because it's something that we shouldn't have to enumerate in a board policy as far as, you know, what our behavior should be. It's something that should be, necessarily have to be memorialized. So, I wasn't necessarily inclined to support the inclusion of it. And to his point, and again, I had stated it in an earlier meeting, you know, I've certainly committed myself to not only monitoring my own behavior, but if, if someone else did, we could just try and short circuit it a little bit before we embarrass ourselves as a board. And I think it's important that, that we do put forth the best, uh, the best face as far as representing our community. And I think we have fallen short, and I agree with Bob. And it is a new year, and I have to be part of the resolution with my colleagues here. So, that being said, if this is the part of the policy that you're gonna tackle from my vantage, but I wouldn't spend a lot of time on it as far as it being included, because I think it would be actually an embarrassment to have us vote to put this in the policy, date it, identifying ourselves as the ones who failed to police ourselves and behave ourselves in a respectful manner. And it isn't something that should necessarily be included in our, in our policy, but it shouldn't have to be. It shouldn't have to be dictated by that, my own personal feeling. So, that's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Holding in business. Mr. Prisco?
Holding in business? Oh, jeez, I'm not prepared yet. One second, let me pull it up. No, I'm good. I'm good, sorry.
Mr. Vessery?
I don't have very much.
Can you bring up the CIT? I think you were, I, I tried to bring it up.
We had our CIT breakfast this morning. It was very, very well attended.
Excellent.
Reviewed accomplishments. Representative Chau was present. I mean, Senator Chau, Representative John were present. They're acknowledged for helping us obtain the funds that allowed us to run the programs. I'm a little embarrassed because I don't have the names of the three. Maybe Bob can help me.
Marshall Lawson, Richard Geer, Diaw, and Kevin Spicer.
All three of those people were awarded.
Good neighbor.
Good, good, they, they received.
Well, we want to come out and take a chair.
Maybe I should have did it.
You should have done it, Mike. I've been running around like crazy.
One of those days.
It's all right. It's understandable.
The, they were awarded the first Good Neighbor. These were nominated by individual citizens through the CIT website, and they were acknowledged also at the meeting. Very enthused about the overall enthusiasm of people partaking in this program. It's growing. Amy is doing a fantastic job of moving things along, expanding the program. And what I find most amazing is she's the third Youth Services Director. And we thought the first one was great, and she was. And we thought the second one was better than she was. And here we are on the third, and she's just fantastic.
Hopefully, we can keep her longer than we kept the other two in mind, at least that long.
I don't know how they do it, but the, we owe it to the Youth Services Committee that have found these fantastic people and convinced them to come and work for the Town of North Reading. We should be grateful.
I agree. Could I just add a couple of little things on there?
Sure, absolutely.
They are gonna do this again in August, when they have the National Night Out, which is again.
Actually, we talked a little bit about that afterward. And we think that breakfast is more appropriate for the awards.
Yep.
But the next major event coming up is the National Night Out on August 5th.
Yeah. It's a great, great event. But they are gonna still take nominations for.
Yes, yes.
So, if you guys know someone in town that, you know, if you want to nominate for it, I think they're taking them in May, which is wonderful. I, seeing these people in the community go up there and, and get these awards, the smiles on their faces, it was, it was priceless, so. I'm glad they're gonna continue to do that a couple of times a year.
Bob, I just have a question on the Community Impact Team. Had someone talked to me about a middle school child participating in a program where they're reading?
On Wednesdays.
Reading on Wednesdays or Fridays. And everybody in the school, including the faculty, are reading the same book at the same time.
In fact.
Yeah, that's Friday.
And I've already gotten feedback, just from people talking about it, saying it's the, the response, not just from the students, but from the faculty and the chatter that's taking place, it appears, whoseever idea it was, and I understand it's been the Impact Team purchased the books.
Yes, but the, it was brought forward by the principal of middle school.
Correct, but it, I mean, just from what I've heard, it's a tremendous program that is resonating throughout the school, and it's a terrific idea. And, you know, at some point, maybe, you know, someone, kids are, including the principal, might want to just come in and articulate here at one of our meetings exactly what's happening, because I think it would be worthy, noteworthy for the community to hear. And I'm hearing it, you know, through the grapevine, through some parents and other people in the community, but it's, it appears as though it's really resonating with the, with the students and the faculty. So, I, I don't know if that's, just to heighten the awareness of, of some of the programs that take place, and again, what the Community Impact Team has funded, I think it just fosters more awareness and, and support when you. I think it just fosters more awareness and support when you're going out looking to raise some money for things.
Yeah, of course, this program is expanded not just for the kids, but it's going right through the whole community. Mary Preney is on the committee now, working for programs for.
But programs such as that, I think, is something that if we could heighten the awareness in the Impact, that would be good. So I don't know if that's something that, pointing through the Community Impact Team or through the school, if you invite someone in to explain what the program is and how it's working.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's actually a subcommittee under the pre-K.
Right.
It's a K through 12. There was.
K through 12.
K through 12 Subcommittee under the CIT. And Superintendent Will spearheads it, and then I think there's five or six other people on that group, and that's the group that came up with it. So they could present. I'm sure they'd be willing to.
I'm in charge of the business Subcommittee, which we're just getting off the ground. So maybe I already got a couple people that are interested in joining.
That's right.
Kind of working on trying to expand funding and things like that, so.
But if we can periodically just highlight some of the programs that are taking place, I think it would be helpful in gaining more support for the efforts.
They have a website at northreadingcit.com.
Are they going to present at town meeting? Would you? They could probably grab that program.
Yeah.
Be around. If you, maybe take that back, that'd be good.
Mr. Fordy?
No.
Mr. Fordy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry. There is, my brain's coming back to work. I was talking to Brad Jones this morning about the Goodyear's property. He doesn't have that anymore. I didn't know that.
Oh, he doesn't?
No. He's giving that up.
To the state?
So it's back onto the control of the state.
Okay.
So, and I also heard, and I haven't been able to confirm it, that Target is moving to our neighbors.
I saw something on the internet, but I didn't get a real confession.
Stop and shop?
No, 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 no.
Target's going to Wilmington?
Wilmington, yeah. You know, which brings up something that I think we should put some real effort into this year, and that is, you know, we've got this vacant property. We need to put some effort, start to put some pressure on powers to be, and including CPC, and trying to get some activity going in that area. It's a shame that that property, the Stop and Shop property is just sitting there. And this Goodyear's just had this other property tied up for a long, long time. Nothing's happened. And I don't know whether we missed an opportunity with Target. Maybe they could never make a deal with the Stop and Shop. I don't even have those discussions to play.
Part of the problem with Stop and Shop is they don't want to give a long-term lease.
Yeah.
They're looking at 10 years.
Ten years or more, beyond it.
People are going to put a ton of money into the building and then not get the return of their investment.
No, I understand. So we're just going to sit there? I mean.
No, I, I.
You think that somehow maybe we should play hardball with them again.
We, you know, I said at a meeting that they, that their representative came at the CPC last year, and, you know, he had a handful of excuses of why it wasn't happening. And not one of them was because we don't want to give a 10-year lease. It's, you know, location's not the greatest, and, you know, no one wants to put the investment in, so.
Locations aren't the greatest, but they chose to put a supermarket there.
And, and keep, you know, and spend a lot of money on doing another supermarket up the street.
In a worse location.
In a worse location, thank you.
Worse parking lot.
Right.
Entrance and egress is terrible.
To keep people out.
So, you know, I think maybe we should, you know, maybe plan on having some discussions. Maybe invite Peter Milano back into CPC and spend some time, even if it's a work session, in the near future.
The Economic Development Commission, they're trying to get people to, you know, if we could stimulate some interest again by talking about it.
I think we have to become proactive.
No, I don't disagree. I don't disagree. Thank you.
Mr. Fordy?
I'm just making sure the blow is all set.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick things. As I'm sure we're all proud of all of our young adults in North Reading, I think I need to point out three who have done some exceptional things over the past few weeks or going forward in their field. First is Jimmy Vezie. I don't know if anybody knows Jimmy. Jimmy's a sophomore at Harvard University. He's a candidate for the Hobie Baker Award, which is the award for the best Division One hockey player. So I'm going to make a suggestion, if anybody can get on their computer and get it onto hobibaker.com. Voting goes until March 9th. I think as of the other day, there's about 20 candidates, and Jimmy was in the top five in voting, so. I know the family. They're great, great people out of the high school with his father years ago. So that'd be great if we could see that happen. Second one is Alex Carpenter. She was selected for the US One's Hockey Team at the Olympics in Sochi, so she'll be, she'll be there representing the United States in a couple of weeks, and I wish her the best. The third was a young man by the name of Joe Ferry. He's, he got a starring role in the Young Company Winter Festival at the Stollman Theater. He's got a major part in that, so that's running from January 29th to February 9th. I just thought there was so much going on with these young adults there. It'd be nice to point them out. The other thing is the wrestling team. I don't know if anybody saw it. It's still undefeated, I believe, as of their last meet. So that's great for them. One other thing, I was sent some updated numbers from the recycling committee on where we stand in the first six months of the new fiscal year, since we made the changes to the trash. And it's pretty impressive, compared to the same time in fiscal year 13. Recycling's up almost 4% and trash is down just about 2%. And that resulted in a savings in the tipping fee of about $53,000. So just wanted to tell them that they're doing a great job. And I'll give a copy of this to everybody, so you can have it, but I just thought you would be impressed by those numbers, so. That's it for me.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Fordy?
I have a question for Mr. Fordy on that.
Yeah?
When does the two-bowel kick in? Now, I know we're a three-bowel now. It's in July?
Yeah.
So, start to slim down.
Oh, I've always been too.
Right, right after spring cleaning.
Mr. O'Leary?
I mentioned earlier John Magazoo, who's resigned his position on the Fourth of July Committee. John, along with most of other people, but really, really just a small number of people were able to bring back the Fourth of July here. And I certainly wanted to acknowledge John's service and his efforts on behalf of bringing back the Fourth of July in North Reading. I'm sure he's still going to be involved to a certain degree, because he's not going to get off the hook. He just doesn't want to have to attend to meetings, I guess. But really, I want to applaud his efforts and thank him very much for his service of the Fourth of July Committee. Secondly, I had the pleasure of this past weekend of attending fundraiser at Mystic Valley, Mystic Valley Elder Services down in Malden. It was a comedy night, where all the proceeds, 100% of the proceeds, were to support the Meals on Wheels program. They raised over $20,000 that evening. Mystic Valley delivers over 2,000 meals a day. And again, at no cost, the people are receiving it. They ask for donations. So it's fundraisers such as this that help assist in maintaining the program. If it wasn't for Mystic Valley Elder Services, what they provide just to the town in North Reading is hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, you know, outside of our budget. So extremely grateful for them. I congratulate them on their successful fundraising effort. And we had a good time. The communities were very good. And finally, I just wanted to acknowledge Jeff Simon's emails and photos of the updates on the new high school facility. He's done a fantastic job of keeping a whole host of people in the community well informed as to the progress of that project. And it's, the project in and of itself is very impressive, but when you see his photos, I'd say he missed his calling, because he's doing this for nothing, you know. Maybe there's something in reform later on as he retires, as far as going around promoting things. But of course, Jeff's efforts over the years, we've certainly acknowledged as far as the success in getting these projects through. But now he's following the project, and this guy is not going to let go until the doors are open and these kids are in there. But really, it is phenomenal as far as looking at the progression of that project.
It's really been great.
And how it's coming together.
Time to see.
So just wanted to thank Jeff publicly for keeping us well informed. That's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anything to say, but.
What time Thursday?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, here.
Second? Second, fourth.
Hi.
June 11th.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Six o'clock.
Eight forty.